I'm Darla Darby. On behalf of the Pittsburgh Central School District PTSA, I'd like to welcome you to the Meet the Board Candidates Night. I am pleased to introduce our moderator, Sherri Johnson. She is currently the Executive Director for the Monroe County School Board Association. She is finishing up her fifth year in that position. Prior to becoming Executive Director, Sherri served for 18 years on the Churchville Chi-Live Board of Education. Sherri was also an active participant at the MCSBA, serving as the association president in 2003. Welcome, Sherri.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone, and I also want to welcome you to the Zoom version of the Pittsburgh Meet the Candidate Night. As introduced, I am Sherri Johnson, Executive Director of Monroe County School Boards Association, and I want to thank the Pittsburgh PTSA for setting this all up for you this evening. I also ask for your patience as we work through this both logistically and in the event we have any glitches with the technology. And I want to thank the Pittsburgh Central School District team for their help in this area as well. Before we ask the candidates to introduce themselves and give their opening remarks, I would like to speak to the work of elected board trustees. As said in the title, Board of Education members hold the public trust. While they are locally elected officials, those in our suburban districts are nonpartisan and unpaid. And in order to do their job well, they will need to devote hundreds of hours during their term to learn about their roles and perform their duties. On top of the 12 legislated hours of professional development, board trustees are required to complete within their first term, they must also become familiar with education law, school finance law, state education department regulations, and the ever-changing impact that federal and state legislation mandates to school districts. And they must also make sure that they are available to their community by serving on district committees, attending and participating in district functions and events. With that said, let's learn more about those who would like to serve the Pittsburgh community in that role. Under the executive order issued by the governor, instead of a random selection of those who turned in a petition for the ballot, names were placed in alphabetical order. And so that is the order that I will use for opening remarks and then questions. Each candidate will get up to five minutes to make their opening remarks. As they've all been shown, please watch the screen for a yellow card, which indicates 30 seconds, and for a red card to know when time is up. After opening remarks, I will return to the first candidate on the ballot to begin questions. But I will then rotate so that everyone gets an opportunity to answer a question first. Candidates have two minutes to answer every question, and every candidate must answer every question. Therefore, only general questions that each candidate would be able to answer will be asked. Finally, we will allow each candidate to four minutes for a closing statement. I do want to thank the Pittsburgh community for their questions. Where feasible, I've combined similar questions or have rewarded parts of a question, but the questions were excellent. And so I thank them, and we will get to as many of those as possible during the course of the event. And so, beginning with the top of the ballot, I will ask for opening remarks from Mr. Ted Oresti.
Good evening. As introduced, my name is Ted Oresti, and I have lived in Pittsburgh for the past 20 years with my wife, Chris, and three children, who have all enjoyed the benefits of a Pittsburgh education. My youngest is a rising senior. I would first like to thank the PTSA for putting this Meet the Candidates Night together, especially this year with all the challenges of having to do it virtually. Also, a big thank you to Sherri Johnson for moderating. This year, I am seeking a third term on the Pittsburgh Board of Education in order to continue to assist the great tradition of exceptional education in Pittsburgh. As I begin my statement, I want to first say to our students and families of color, know that my commitment around inclusion and equity has never been stronger. There is no place for racism in our schools or within society at large. However, I know it exists, and I am committed to doing my part to end it. Over the past six years, it has been an honor to work with the entire Pittsburgh educational community to maintain high-quality standards while balancing financial sustainability and remaining child-focused. I believe that my extensive background in accounting and business management has proven to be useful while serving on the board. Additionally, I believe that I am uniquely qualified to serve, given my background in public safety as a 34-year volunteer fireman and Executive Director of the Brighton Fire District. I bring an important and relevant background in health, safety, and security to the Board of Education. I have served as Chairman of the district's Audit Oversight Committee for the past three years. I also serve on the Board's Communications and Messaging and Budget Communications Committees. I served on the Monroe County School Boards Association Labor Relations and Information Exchange Committees. I am proud of how our team always committed to continual improvement, never settling for the status quo. I am also very proud of what I call Pittsburgh's secret sauce: collaboration. Collaboration is what I believe has helped our district excel in so many ways. I enjoy the good times, like achieving full-day kindergarten. However, when things don't go our way or we face a challenge, I am always proud of how we roll up our sleeves and resolve the problem together. One recent example is the district equity work. I really appreciate the time I spent working with our district leadership team and Generation Ready. I know that I personally grew through the experience. As a district, there has been significant growth with respect to equity in our schools, and we have a great opportunity to continue to be a leader in this area through continued professional development. Looking ahead, there is a very uncertain critical issue facing our district: COVID-19 and the unanticipated consequences to our overall budget. The hardest part is the timetable, and the decision-makers are vague and outside of our control, and the final parameters surrounding the issues are unclear and fluid. At this point, what we must focus on is what we do know: education must continue. This requires that we plan to be able to respond in multiple ways or even a combination of these multiple ways. I am proud of how our district responded to the circumstances never before faced by any school before. The plane was built while it was flying, so to speak, and it has stayed in the air. That does not mean, however, that we don't have room for improvement. Another substantial challenge we will face will be bringing the students and staff back together in the school setting where they will feel safe. What social-emotional issues will we be dealing with? What questions can we anticipate? We will need to be ready. Ultimately, to embark on any of the initiatives I've mentioned, we have to have the financial resources. Unfortunately, we are not in the position of being able to just print more money when we want it. As Board of Education members, we are accountable to the community and subject to the New York State's tax cap. I do believe that with prudent planning and prioritization of our students' needs, we will continue to be able to meet our objectives moving forward. I am concerned, however, by recent comments by the governor that mid-year cuts to our already reduced aid are within the realm of possibility. To that end, we are working on advocacy, not only to our state legislators, but more importantly, also to our federal representatives as well. I will always remain student-focused. However, I firmly believe we cannot spend money that we do not have. I look forward to the opportunity to answer the questions presented here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the ballot is Mr. Sariar Fazili, and you can have your opening statement, please.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Before I start, I will take a moment and remember Mr. George Floyd and those who have gone, as he has, unceremoniously. I thank the organizers of this event for giving me the opportunity to address the electorate, the people of Pittsburgh, in these very uncertain days and times of COVID-19. I appreciate the opportunity to share the ideas, some thoughts that I've had, and talk about some areas where I think that we can all collaborate and improve on what we hear and what we know is the best school district in the state. My name is Sariar Fazili, and my friends know me as Sandy. I was raised in Buffalo, New York, educated there. And like Pittsburgh, I grew up in a town known as Williamsville, New York. I have ancestry that goes across the oceans. I am a Kashmiri-American Muslim. My parents are immigrants. They came here with just their education. And having done that, they provided the best of the best for my brother and I. I am a happy father, married to my wife, Bushra, for just recently 24 years. We have three girls in the district, one each at Mendon High School, the senior, an eighth grader, and a third grader. We came here for one reason and one reason alone: having moved to Rochester, and we moved to Pittsburgh because of the schools. And everybody knows the reputation of the Pittsburgh schools. I had been here before. I received my undergraduate degree in economics from the University of Rochester with a concentration and a management certificate. I went home, and I did some graduate work in economics at the University of Buffalo before finally matriculating and completing my law degree there. I have been intimately involved in my communities. I have been the President of the Islamic Center of Rochester. I am currently serving as the President of the Pittsburgh Youth Services, which is an organization that is an incredible achievement in and of itself. And I also serve as the Vice President of the PAC Pittsburgh Swim Team. And I serve on another very unsung organization, the Pittsburgh Rotary Club. It is an honor to serve. Previous to my involvement with these organizations, I was involved with the schools, both on different projects, such as International Day at the elementary school at Mendon Center, as well as the Religious Observance and Advisory Committee, that was the precursor to the Inclusivity and Diversity Committee. And on that committee, we tried basically to ensure inclusion of all students, of all backgrounds, all religion, in the school day so that they all were made to feel a part of what we call the Pittsburgh community. Many have asked me, why do you want to go out and be a member of the Board of Education? And I said, quite honestly, what else could somebody want to do other than serve their community and at the same time, serving those that are most precious to us? And those are our children. Our education and their education is unique and is of incredible priority for all of us. We want to advocate not just for our kids and their future, but for our stakeholders, and with our stakeholders: our faculty, our families, our staff. And we want to expand on our understanding and inclusion of all the communities that are a part of that. We want to create opportunities for children of all abilities, all backgrounds, and focus on the whole student. Everybody knows about Pittsburgh academic prowess. They know about our athletics and our arts. We want them to know also that Pittsburgh is the most inclusive and most socially and mentally health-aware community when it comes to our students. We want to remove all of the misunderstandings that happen and that are associated with children of different backgrounds and different abilities. And we want to make sure that we bring everybody along together. I can give you an example. In these COVID days, Pittsburgh youth counselors have been working overtime, trying to get to their students, trying to bond with them and make them feel like they are a part still of this community. I can give you the example of one of our counselors, who indicated that, all of a sudden, one day, the screen went black. And when the student stepped back, they said, hey, what happened? And the child said to the counselor, I just needed a hug. These are the things that our counselors, our teachers, our educators, our coaches are doing. They go out of their way, they go the extra mile to ensure that we are making a connection with all of our students. The same is said for our faculty. I've received many phone calls since I announced my candidacy. People are talking about so many different things: a return to school. How is it going to look? Are they going to be allowed to go back to school? What's the tax situation going to be like? Are we able to make our commitments? And how are we going to be able to be as efficient as we always were? I have promised them the same thing, that if and when elected, I will use all of my education and experience in going through each and every line in our budget to ensure that we maximize the return for our students. I look forward to taking your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Robin Scott. You just need to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Robin Scott, candidate for Pittsburgh School Board. I consider it an honor to be present, ready to speak, listen, and respond to your questions this evening. As background, I am the third of four daughters of Robert, Leah, and Amy Scott and the product of Duval County, Florida, public and private schools. My hard-working dad had a third-grade education and could not read. I remember being a young learner and reading the following to him as I picked up a pack of his cigarettes: Daddy, the Surgeon General says smoking can be dangerous to your health. For many years, my mother had two years of college. I remember my mother's early job being a day worker, or the help. Many of you have seen the movie or read the book. She later moved to being a custodian in public schools for 27 years, a position that included benefits and a much better salary. At her retirement, my sisters and I made sure that my mother completed her education, culminating in a PhD in psychology specializing in Christian counseling. My family values education. I also grew up in a community where public schools were segregated until 1971 in spite of the 1954 Brown versus Board of Education ruling. So from first to sixth grades, my public school life included all people who looked like me, including administrators and teachers. Then I was selected to test out of our public school system, resulting in my earning a scholarship to study at the elite Jacksonville Episcopal High School from eighth to 12th grades. I share all of that to say that I have a similar experience to the PCSD urban suburban students as I traveled across town to school unminimally, two buses during those formative years, and interacted with children of affluence. Did I share that my family did not own a car until I was 16? I attended Rhodes College and University of Michigan at Ann Arbor, where I obtained a master's degree. Michigan is where I met Dave, my husband of 33 years, and together, we raised our son Adrian, recently deceased, and our daughter, who attends Pittsburgh Mendon. I've lived in six states, traveled globally, and worked for multinational corporation and management. When I decided to run for the school board, I wanted to come up with a slogan that would serve as the foundation of my campaign. I chose "Pittsburgh-focused." In addition to Pittsburgh-focused, there are three words that best describe me as a candidate: experience, commitment, impact. About experience: We moved to Pittsburgh in 2005, and currently, I service the President of the Pittsburgh Central PTSA. My term ends June 30, 2020. Prior to that, I served as Central PTSA President-elect, VP of Education, Secretary Chair of Enrichment Grants, Building Chair at Thornhill Road Elementary, Parents on the Playground Volunteer, Super Sale Volunteer, After-School Enrichment Volunteer, Yearbook Volunteer, Building Secretary. In the Rochester community, I've served as President of the Lynx Incorporated and Jack and Joe of America Incorporated. I've also served as Treasurer for both organizations. I volunteered as a Daisy and Brownie troop leader for Girl Scouts Western New York. I am a proven and experienced leader. Commitment, dependability, and dedication. In addition to the roles mentioned, I serve on numerous committees as a parent stakeholder in collaboration with our school district. Among them are our district planning team, Inclusivity Advisory Committee, Parent Advisory Committee. I am also honored to be a part of the Generation Ready Equity and Inclusion Training. Most importantly, I attend school board meetings. Impact: My current leadership role involves advocacy for the needs of parents, teachers, and students in our school district that promotes a partnership that ensures all students a successful education within a safe and nurturing environment. From my life experiences, I've learned empathy for all. And quote, "To whom much is given, much is required." My past has also given me a broad perspective and the capacity to navigate interactions with people from varying educational, socioeconomic, cultural, and diverse backgrounds. I'm asking for your support in ensuring that I continue to advocate and collaborate on behalf of all students. Robin Scott, experience, commitment, impact. Thank you.
Thank you all for those compelling opening statements. We're going to get right into the questions now from the community. They have many, and they are varied, and they are very current with the issues that we're facing. I'm going to start with the first question, and that goes to Ted. Same order, first time through, then we'll start rotating the questions. The question is, there are so many unknowns as we head into the 2020-21 school year. What do you see as the Board of Education's role in making those plans? And what makes you qualified for that role?
Can you restate the first part of the question for me?
Sure. I can repeat these for any of you anytime you'd like. There are so many unknowns as we head into the 2020-21 school year. What do you see as the Board of Education's role in making those plans moving forward? And what makes you qualified for that role?
Thank you. There certainly are. I mean, as I stated in my opening, it seems right now there are more unknowns than knowns. And I think that the Board's role in the planning process is working with the district's leadership team and central office team in evaluating the different plans and options that we have going forward and looking at those and trying to figure out what direction we're going to travel. But as I stated also, one of the most difficult things in all of this is waiting for direction from many of the decision-makers that are far beyond our control. And once we get the guidance from them, we'll get some better direction on where we can go. The qualifications that I have that lend myself qualified, I think certainly is my background in safety and security. I think that I'm dealing with a lot of that at work right now. We've had to change our phasing. And we've moved from Phase 1 to Phase 2 in both my business and also at the firehouse. And that's been quite a process. And I think that those qualifications will lend itself well as we start looking at the plans going forward. So I feel very comfortable being a part of that process going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Sariar. Same question.
Thank you. We know what we don't know, and that's a lot, unfortunately. We have heard promises, almost guarantees, from the governor that school aid will be cut. And we've heard this not since yesterday, but since April, when the studies were coming out and showing what the COVID situation is costing the economy, the state, at different levels: sales tax levels, hotel and occupancy levels, you name it. We have suffered immensely because of this. What's my experience? I have helped to run. I have been on a team that managed the Islamic Center, had a significant budget, how we spent, where we spent. And the most important role I had there was as a custodian of the community's money. And I say that, and I take that as quite possibly the greatest trust that I had. We call it an amana, because they would pay their charitable money to us, their religiously obligated money. And we, in turn, had the responsibility to see where that money would best be used, in whose hand, and in what manner. When we say that we have to spend that money like it's our own, it was more important than our own. And I assure this community that our focus, my education in economics, in finance, will be put to the test in seeing how and where we use our resources. Why, how am I qualified? You know, I'm a father, I'm a husband. We run the household, as we do. We will be even more strict with how we run the district and its finances. We will look to areas where we have never looked before, if and when we feel that we are in a rut, whether financially or otherwise. We will look for aid from places where otherwise we haven't had it, and we will look to spend money as efficiently as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. And Robin?
Yes. So I'll begin by saying that, right before we came on, I did hear that Dr. Fauci, Anthony Fauci, said that the idea of schools not being opened is not necessary. So I was heartened to hear that. Also, he said it would depend on the level of infection in the area in the individual respective communities. So the role of the Board in making these decisions, of course, we would review. There is a committee at play right now, and that committee is formulating contingency after contingency about school opening. And of course, we want our schools to open. That would be the best and optimal situation for our children. And I would like to add that, right, you know, there's our mental health and social concerns at play right now. So as a Board member, we would be evaluating the work of the committee and their study. My qualifications, I've sat at the table with, I've had the opportunity, and it's a wonderful one, to sit at the table with stakeholders and make decisions on behalf of the school district. And of course, my role as Central PTSA President, I've had the opportunity to work with key stakeholders, our Board President, monthly coffees, our school superintendent, frequent meetings. And so I consider that an honor, but I also consider it preparation for service on the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. So this next question, Sariar, you get this one first. And it is long, and I will repeat it anytime any of you need it. How can you, as a candidate, and if elected, a member of the Pittsburgh Board of Education, use your position, power, and agency to work toward equity and bring awareness to and support for dismantling systemic racism?
If you don't mind, I just want to repeat it. My understanding of the question is that, if elected, how would I use the position, power, and the agency to work to achieving equity and...
Bring awareness to and support for dismantling systemic racism.
The Board of Education sets the policy without hesitation, by definition, for the Pittsburgh Central School District. Everything starts from the top up. If we have to be able to use our position to teach, then we must. And we have to use it in such a way that we expand our curriculum. I received a copy of a text from one of our graduating seniors that was horrifying. She participated in a livestream event after the George Floyd incident, and the text reads, and I'm going to quote it, something like this. And I have the student's permission to use it. "You're just a stinky chink. Go tell your real family and not your adopted little family to have a better life than the piece of expletive Asians have to offer you, that you, expletive, can shove the coronavirus up your expletive." The student called me, told me about this, and asked me, what is the reason behind this? She said, "You have to insist that there is made a part of our curriculum, classes, and focus specifically towards this. It's not just about people knowing, yes, there's racism. They have to learn how it is, where it came from, and that it is not okay. And if it has to be made a part of our mandated curriculum, like English and math, then we have to take the steps to do it. It is not something that we want to be preaching to the choir, because there are too many students that we know that are everything away from and far away from racism. But we have to make it clear through the curriculum, through instructions, through professional development that helps our teachers get through to the students, that there is no place for this. And if we mandate it as a part of our curriculum, we are certain that we are doing whatever we can to ensure that while the students are in our care and custody for those six to eight hours a day, that they are getting just as much of an appropriate education in that way than they are as they are with their academics." Thank you.
Thank you. Robin, next for that question?
Yes. One way I could use my position and influence in ensuring equity for all students is to continue the work that our Central PTSD is involved. And that's the work with Generation Ready. And I've been a part of training that involves teaching about equity and inclusion, cultural proficiency, and all things that are forged to ensure that our students feel good about themselves, no matter their background, no matter their place in society. We want all students to feel affirmed when they walk through our buildings and be able to see some of themselves. And so I'm also proud of the work. Our librarians have been recognized. recognized nationally for the work they've done in cataloging works that could be beneficial to our students. Also, I know that hidden bias training is something that in my role as PTSD President, I work with the DNI Diversity and Inclusion Committee. And that's one thing that we wanted to get off the ground this year that will be coming in the near future. But that's part of our professional development at PCSD and our own teacher center. Julie Barker teaches that training, and I look forward to being a part of that. So things like that. And also in Generation Ready training, we're at the stage of looking at inequities right now, present inequities. It may be something like honors classes and who gets to attend those. But I want you to know that some of the people I've sat at the table have great hearts, and we are really looking at these things to affirm our students and prepare them for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ted, same question? Ted, you have to unmute.
Thank you. Certainly a challenge in being third, because a lot of great things have been said. But I'll start with certainly the position in utilizing that. I've always believed that as a leader, you lead from the front. And as a board member, I feel it's important that you use that position to help establish the culture. I certainly am proud, as I mentioned, of all the work that the district has done. As mentioned, the cultural proficiency training with Generation Ready, I think that that's setting the district up for success moving forward. Not mentioned was work that Rock to Change did with our students, leading students from across the county. And that was absolutely phenomenal work. I'm really proud of our inclusivity advisory council and the work that they're doing. I think that the top-down commitment in our district is really driving great work. Restorative practices, updated code of conduct that we worked on this year was a great movement forward. And I think the continued movement across the district is exactly heading in the right direction. And there is the responsibility of the board to continue to drive that energy in a positive direction. I think that it's also involving the community, because it's not just incumbent upon the school to do this work, but to do it in concert with the community and to have a cooperative spirit throughout. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, question number three. And Robin, you get to take this one on first. And it is, what can Pittsburgh do to keep the quality of education that the Pittsburgh Central School District provides with increased mandates from the state and fewer funds provided by the state?
I would have to say that this will be a time to share that I am in full support of passing of the school budget, and I encourage you all to pass that budget. The budget has an increase of four, about $4 million. And we really want to be able to sustain the level of quality for our students. And in that regard, our kids need mental health and social supports. They really need that. And we want to continue to, you know, our school has been lauded. Our school district has lauded for our music programs, our arts. I always say that Pittsburgh is a public school with a private school feel. And I can say that because I've attended both. And I just want you all to know that I'm so proud of our school district, and I hope that the opportunities that we provide for our kids will continue. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ted, you get this question second?
Can you restate it? I want to make sure I address it correctly.
Absolutely. What can Pittsburgh do to keep the quality of education that Pittsburgh provides with increased mandates from the state and fewer funds provided by the state?
Thank you. I definitely see this as a huge problem for education in general. But it's one of our greatest challenges. You can only squeeze so much out of a budget, and I believe that we've been doing that over the last number of years. And one of the things I think that we have to embark on most importantly, and we have been trying, is advocacy. We are not getting funding from the state that we need desperately. The state's not meeting its legal obligations in funding to us. And if we are unsuccessful in the advocacy, we're facing some pretty tough decisions ahead. You know, we've not affected programming to date, and I am personally concerned with what it looks like going forward. Because, you know, certainly when we look at our equity work and we look at our social emotional efforts, those are extremely important, and we want to maintain our rigorous education. And all of that is a huge investment. And as the state continues to reduce its funding of us, something's got to give. And it's a deep concern that I have. And as we've continued to squeeze the budget over the years, I'm not sure that it's sustainable over the long haul. So I think it's a great question, and it's something that we're going to have to continue to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sarir, you get the last word on that question?
Thank you. Just so, I'm getting this message that my internet is unstable, so I hope that I'm coming through okay. My apologies for the glitch. With respect to how we are going to continue to be at the top of our game with less funds, the fact is straightforward. We are going to get less funds from the state. We have to be more efficient. I'm hearing from different avenues that things like consolidation are important. We have large classroom sizes as they are with the students. If we have to maintain the excellence in our faculty and our paraprofessionals and our staff, we may have to consider going to increase classroom sizes. That would be, I know, a disaster for many of our learners, because they focus and they strive to get smaller, more focused groupings. However, we have to be able to manage with what we have, and we have to be able to be better with it. When we talk about things like emotional supports, social and mental health supports, we have to understand and we have to know that only one of our schools, Sutherland High School, has a full-time professional there solely there as a social worker. The rest of our schools have people that are there a couple of times a week, and they manage to mold and counsel and guide and provide for those students as best they can. We need to invest more there. We need more hours from these professionals in those schools so that the benefits of the increased and focused counseling bring those students up and give them the confidence that they need. We are facing a lot of issues financially. I don't know how many calls I got with people asking me about the budget, the budget, the budget, and how they feel we can't keep increasing the budget, $3 to $4 million every year. And I told them this. I said, so long as we are able to maximize our efficiencies, even if we increase the budget a little bit here and there, we need to be able to lean on the professionals that we have, our teachers, and our other staff members to bring us the focus that we've come to appreciate and respect from our teachers. We will have to rely on them even more.
Thank you. The next question, we go back to the top of the ballot, and Ted, you get this first. And I believe this is more of a curriculum related to the question you all just answered. Pittsburgh prides itself on being a student-centered district. What areas would you prioritize to maintain and what areas would you want to strengthen?
What areas would I like to maintain and what areas would I like to strengthen? I would like to maintain the high quality that we have, and I'd like to strengthen our social, emotional areas, the counseling that Sarir mentioned, and our STEM classes that we have. So I think that would basically be what we would need to do. I mean, I'm very proud of our academic rigor, and so that would be my answer. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sarir, next?
Respectfully, I'm an old-school kid of immigrants, and they focus on math and science. And I remember teaching my kids early on how important it was, especially with my girls, to be able to do math and be creative problem solvers and thinkers. I think it is a must that we focus, we prioritize on making our students thinkers and problem solvers. They need to be technically oriented. They need to be obviously arts-oriented as well. But they need to be able to solve unique problems with different means and ways. As we progress in the future, we see everything is a problem-solving skill now, and that's what people are looking for. What do I want to strengthen? We have to strengthen our inclusivity. We have to strengthen the ability of our students and including our staff and our leadership to realize that people come from different areas, different parts of the world, the different parts of the country, different parts of the city. And we need to be able to communicate with them, understand them, and not make them feel like they are so different or so foreign to us that we just don't understand them, so we exclude them. I remember growing up in Western New York, in Williamsburg, New York, in the 70s. And my parents were immigrants. I was born and raised here, obviously, but my culture made me different. Even today, in 2020, if you ask somebody about a Muslim, they can give you a reasonable answer. Those days, it was like I would come from another planet. We want to make sure that no matter what somebody's religious background is, national origin background is, and their ethnicity, come what may, they are made to feel as welcome in our school as they are at home and everywhere else. I think we need to continue to focus and invest in the mental health and the social awareness things that we've talked about previously. And we want to make sure that this district is the most open and the most welcoming that there is in the state.
Thank you. And Robin, you get the last word on that question?
Thank you. So when I think about our Pittsburgh Central School District being school-centered, student-centered, I go right to our tagline, excellence today and tomorrow. And we really want to be in a position and position ourselves to sustain that ideal. And the proof is in the pudding. You know, we're on the top 100 list, and that's been very consistent throughout my time in the school district many years now. And so, of course, we want to. That's one of our priorities, is to maintain that excellence. So it's one thing that we need to strengthen, and we are on target to do that. Our work with Generation Ready Training and the cultural proficiency that that involves. And we want to do that because our children will be going out into a world that does not look like what our Pittsburgh community does. So it's to their advantage to be able to learn at an early age about the differences of people and to learn to value others and to celebrate others. And so it will be a win for them in their professional lives and in their future. So we are in the business of building global citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next question, Sarir, you get this one first. What do you believe have been the impacts of remote learning on all students in our district? But especially those impacts related to students with disabilities?
I think the impact of remote learning has been significant at the extremes for some of the kids that have been in the district and who have been used to the rigor and who have worked hard. I think it's been something that they reasonably well adapted to. In, they were served lemons, they made lemonade out of it. I think those kids did a good job from all the people I've talked to. Some of the students that needed to push had some difficulties. They weren't as motivated as they may have needed to be, and their parents, worried about jobs, worried about income, worried about benefits, had to prod them along. And it took some, took some time to figure out how to teach their child. For six to eight hours a day, somebody else had that job, and all of a sudden, we had to learn how to do it. As I mentioned in my opening, though, the problem that we have seen with remote learning had to do with our children who needed more, who had either learning challenged or had disabilities or what have you, who were meeting with counselors and mental health professionals on a very regular basis, that all of a sudden was doing it like this through the TV. As people are talking about now, our seniors, our graduating seniors, they talk about going to YouTube University. I think that's the problem that we had here, was that our very highly-trained professionals that were dealing with our most sensitive and most unique students were unable to give that calming, hand-holding, arm-around-the-shoulder kind of care that the students needed. The inability sometimes of a parent to educate their special needs or learning-assisted child was probably even more frustrating when they had to try to do it through a screen and without the assistance of those professionals. So this is crisis learning. It has been put in their lap and our lap, and hopefully, if we can get away from this, as Robin said, if there is a hope that come fall, we have some kind of normalcy, we can get away from it. But otherwise, we will have to increase the expectations on our social, mental health professionals to assist us and bring them along.
Thank you. Robin, you get this question next?
Thank you. Remote learning on all students. As a parent, I can see it firsthand. And as a PTSD President, I was hearing from all parents, well, several parents. So in my role there, I, of course, we have people who reach out to us, and we're also a part of different rooms, chat rooms, where people are expressing their concerns. And so as a PTSD President, there were varying degrees of how our parents wanted the learning to happen at the beginning. And so there was concern about rigor, but we all had to come to terms with the fact that this was an emergency situation. This was not regular online learning. This was an emergency. And it was not easy for any stakeholder during this time. It has been so challenging. Personally, I'm thankful that we did not have our children sitting in front of the screens from 8:00 to 2:30. I'm thankful for that. Some of our, some of my friends who have kids in private schools, they tell me that that type of learning was going on. That would not have been good for our kids mentally, their mental wellness. Challenges, I also heard from the parents who are used to IEP supports. Some of our past students, some of it was very challenging for our students and parents. And so, of course, in moving forward, I'm sure that we will be gathering a pandemic preparedness plan that will address these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted, last word on this one?
Thank you. As I think about this question and what it's trying to get at, I think about assessment in trying to figure out for the student-centered district that we are, what can we do to reduce the stress, the loss of routine, if we had to continue distance learning into the future? Because I think that's what this question is trying to get at, the impact on the student. And to me, that's what we really have to think about. And there was significant impact on the student. It changed their daily routine. They weren't going to school. They were at home. They were having their classes, obviously, in a much different way, and that's significant. So to me, it's about the future if it had to continue, and what could we do differently? And so I look at that, and certainly, students with disabilities and students with IEPs, I think that there's a tremendous gap there, that if this had to continue into the future, how do we deliver education to students with those? how do we deliver education to students with those needs? Because that's very important, that if we're going to have equity, that we find a way to make it equitable for students with those needs. And and that's a very um great um gap that needs to be filled. So that's what I think about when I look at this question and try to assess what it's getting at. Thank you.
Well, actually, that was perfect because the follow up to that question was just exactly how you all um approached it. So you've answered two questions in one, which um is helpful since we have over twenty questions. So I will move on to the next one, and the next one is um Robin, for you to take on first. And um that question is, what is your position about having SROs in school? And how do you view their role?
Please repeat that question.
Absolutely, sure. Um, what is your position about having SRO, School Resource Officers, in school? And how do you view their role?
Um SROs in schools, um of course, at the high school level. Um at drop off, I I am one of those parents who drive my child to school. Um, you know, of course, we see um the officers present. Um, I really um, I think it adds a level of security to the campus. And um I really don't have a um an issue with um the officers being present. I think they add value in um, you know, we have cameras in our um, you know, our secondary schools, but I really think it assists in um a good and secure school environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um Ted, you get this one next.
So School Resource Officers um have existed in schools for decades. Um I think really the question is what that uh School Resource Officer, what what form it's going to take? And it runs the gambit from um a s- security guard with a windbreaker to an armed security guard. And I I really think that uh, you know, that's the discussion, that's the question um that a district has to look at. Um, you know, I I think it's important that we have some form, some semblance of uh especially at the high school level of a uh security uh person or persons in the schools um for a number of reasons, um whether it's working the perimeter, the parking lots. Um and uh maintaining that sense of order and responsibility um that's beyond where the teachers can get to. Um and uh, you know, I think that there's connections that are made with the students and giving another um touch point for uh for the kids, which I think is valuable. Um but uh, you know, certainly, it's something that the uh the entire educational community would have to come together and and have conversation on if it were to for to change um the nature of where we are today and what we have in our schools currently. Thank you.
Thank you. And Suriya, you get the last word on this question.
Yes, uh I I I am strongly in favor of having the School Resource Officers or Security Officers there. Uh I also have a habit of dropping my children off at school, uh at least my middle schooler and my high schooler until she got her license. Um and it it gave it gave me some some comfort that in the area that they would walk from the car to the school, that somebody was watching in addition to their father. Um, there have been questions raised about, as Ted made a reference to, whether or not they should be armed. And I can tell you, the last thing I want to see in our school, whether Pittsburgh or anywhere else, are more weapons. I think we have more than enough of those already. In the event that there is some disturbance in the schools, whether it's the athletic fields or the or the stands where the parents are, or even in the halls, I think those resource officers play a very vital role in calming tensions, trying to talk to people, trying to make the recommendations to relax and behave themselves. We've seen them at work uh in our gyms during uh during interscholastic games. Uh so if we have them there, we should have them for our students also. Uh but when we talk about their role and how they're used, uh I think we have to be very careful in making uh making those guidelines uh clear as far as whether or not they should be uh they should be armed, because I think we have to be very careful with that.
Thank you. All right, back to the top once again. And Ted, first question, this is another budget question. If the budget does not pass, what changes would you support in making the necessary cuts?
If the budget doesn't pass, we would be looking at approximately a four million dollar gap. Um and as far as what would be cut, um you know, it's kind of legislated. Um, we would have to look at all the non mandated um items and uh building access would be restricted, uh you know, non building um items. Um, we'd be looking at extracurriculars, we'd be looking at um electives. Um, it it's a gap that would be very difficult to close. And um I'm very hopeful um from uh someone that really cares a lot, as I know most of our community does, um about the high quality education that we're accustomed to in Pittsburgh, um that we're not faced with those types of cuts. Um, the arts, the sports, the APs, um those are the types of cuts because there's absolutely no way that we could wring out of our budget um the types of cuts that would be necessary to close a four million dollar gap. Um and I think it's important to note that that four million dollar gap would set us back to where we would start the next year that far behind that these are the types of cuts that would last for years. And the programs that we would cut this coming year would be gone for years into the future because of things like the tax cap, it would take us years and years to get back to where we are just today, let alone um building into the future. So my hope is that we're not faced with such a disaster, and I would call it a disaster. Thank you.
Thank you, Suriya. Same question.
That's the toughest question, because it's something we hope that we don't have to face. Uh but one of the things we would look at is where we are started, where we started last year and where our increases are. And I think we have to see where our investment is, where it's going up. For example, we see that we do not want to cut actual education and instruction. As I said earlier, we have to be able to work around and be more efficient. If that means increasing our class sizes, we will, we we should do that. If it means ensuring that our children, if we have to change the structure of the day so that they're at our schools less, and we therefore have to get more out of them and out of our teachers in a less period of time, we have to look at that. We want to, we want to focus on the areas where we are getting maximum return for that dollar spent. Because as Ted said, four million dollars is not a joke. And trying to level out four million and maintain ourselves is very difficult. One thing is for certain, if there have to be cuts, those cuts should be balanced amongst all or as many of the categories that we can, such that no one, no area, whether it's arts, athletics, education, instruction, you name it, mental health specifically and especially, are not facing the largest of the cut. We don't want to eliminate, and we don't want to exacerbate any weaknesses that we already have. Rather, we want to take care of things in such a way, if we have to, that we are minimizing in certain areas such that nobody goes home.
Thank you. And Robin, you get the last word on that.
Yes, and um speaking to the gap that's about three point nine mil- three point nine million dollars, um that would greatly affect the programming that we want to have for our children. And so that would include um non mandated um items on our budget, um including um, of course, um the um Suriya and Ted just referred to um social emotional support, enrichment and APs, um kindergarten, high school electives, athletics, extracurriculars, field trips, um things that really enhance the lives of our children. So um in answer to the question, if um what would I support in potentially cutting? Um, I would have to um sit with our board, and of course, it's a a seven member, symbol, seven member board. And um we would arrive at the least best um situation for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Somewhat aligned with this, but a little bit different. Um Suriya, you get this question first. Um, what do you see as the most important challenges, both short range and long term, facing Pittsburgh students if they return to school this fall?
Wha- what are the most important challenges, short and long term, if they come back to school? I think the largest challenge, both in the short term and the long term, is the student's comfort in returning to some kind of a crowded area. How the social distancing is set up, if in fact, it's still needed to the extent that it is now? How the students are able to uh, you know, cooperate and mix up with their friends and their peers? The transition back to school will be the greatest short term issue that they face. And again, though, the long term is, are they comfortable? Are they able to socially and mentally get back into a system that they missed due to trauma that they had faced through COVID until until the return? Uh I think that parents honestly have to be most comfortable in number one, sending their kids back, following the science, following all the leaders uh that we have seen, following the true science. And the parents have to be able to communicate with their kids and convince them that, hey, it's okay. I have an elementary school student, I have an eighth grade student. You know, the elementary kids, the teacher will hug them, put an arm around them, reassure them. The kids have to be comfortable to see their teacher and get a hug. And I think that is going to be the most crucial thing, is convincing them that it's okay to be around people when we have been telling them for the last three to four months, don't be near anybody and and stay away from them. Long term, the transition is essential for the kids. We have to convince them that as time passes, as science continues to evolve and teach us, there will be things that make it easier, whether it's an immunization, whether it's more education on what does and doesn't work, and just being a part of the community and relying on what they are being told. Long term, they may have to increase a reliance on online learning if in fact, there is a return of this episode. If that's the case, they need to be assured that that's a a reasonable alternative, and we will work with it to go forward.
Thank you. Robin, next.
Yes, um, some of the most important challenges to coming back to school um short term are basically um mandates by our governor. So of course, we'd have to adhere to those. Um, for our kids, um remediation, um catching up with maybe some concepts that they need um more learning on at the beginning before they begin uh even the um current curriculum. Um, um, long term, um there's, there should be um planning for um to make sure that our kids have all of the devices and, you know, Wi Fi capability. We should be advocating for those things in case we do have to um exit school again for a short period of time next year. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ted, final word.
Okay, well, I said, I'm not going to repeat uh the things that were said. Uh but I think that um, so the short term, I do believe that they covered everything. On the long term, the landscape is changing. Um, we're hearing about a lot of different things, whether it's the standardized testing and how that whole world is changing. And kids that have been coming up through the system, and I think mostly about our high school students, they've been heading sort toward a certain track um in whether it's SATs, ACTs, and that kind of thing. Um, all of that looks like it's going to be changing. A lot of colleges are going to test optional, or the tests in the way they're being given is changing. Um, and that has a lot of impact on on our students. Um, college admissions are are changing. Kids that are graduating um this year are looking at gap years because the um potential uh college experience next year is going to be different. So all these different variables are being created and have a significant impact on our students that are looking at their senior years next year, or juniors going next year, going to be seniors the year after that. So there's this cascading effect of impact um that is going to have um impact in the way that we educate our kids, going to have impact on the way that we prepare our kids for college. All these changes will have to be reflected in how we prepare our kids um for the future. And um we have to um ready that along with everything else that we're preparing for. Uh so there's a lot of uh, a lot of thinking and preparation that has to occur. Thanks.
Thank you. Next question for Robin. What have you learned from constituents in the Pittsburgh community about what's important to them? And how would you, as a Board of Education member, continue to get that information?
What I've learned from constituents is that they want excellence in education for their kids. And um it's something that all of us want for our children. Um, how will I continue as a board member to gather information about what our constituents are interested in? Well, there's a plethora of ways to um gather that information. Um, Facebook is one. Um, even next door, uh my own subdivision Charter Oaks, that's one, where we get to hear what our constituents are concerned about. Um, as president of Pittsburgh Central PTSA, of course, I would get um correspondence from our parents. And so there's any number of ways and to um find out the information, of course. Um, in the role of of as a board member, you will be getting um lots of information, and you will be hearing um parent concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted, next for that same question.
Well, I guess I have a little advantage here, having been a board member for the past six years. I can tell you that um I've I've learned a lot about what's what's important um to the constituents. Um, and and I learned that in a number of different ways. Um, I go to Wegmans, I go to the Pittsburgh Dairy, I walk down Main Street, I walk the canal. Um, people are more than happy to share what's important to them. And one of the things that's really interesting um that I've learned in the past six years is people have issues that are important to them, and they're very passionate about them. And what's most important is that you take the time to listen to them and hear them out on their issues. And that's something that I really enjoy doing. And when people say, why do I like being on the board? That's one of the things that I really enjoy most, is hearing people's issues and what's important to them. Um, we can't do everything that everybody wants, but it's important that we hear out everybody's issues and and find out what's important and what's out there. And I continue to do that. I try to be as accessible as I can. I'm at a lot of sporting events, uh arts events. Um, I try to go to curriculum nights and things like that. Being out there and immersing yourself amongst our constituents is the best way to be accessible to the constituents and hear what they have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. And Suriya, same question.
With respect to what the constituents say is most important to them, I've had an earful uh for the last two or three weeks. Uh I'm I'm fascinated by the number of people, even if they don't have children in the schools, that are concerned with how the district uh is being run and how well it's being run, or what uh concerns they have. First and foremost, people are concerned about the budget and whether it's going to be an automatic increase in uh in its balance uh in the budget every year, will it constantly go up, or will there come a point in time when the increases are either reduced or they are stopped? And talking to them about it uh tells you, as Ted was saying, the passion that people have about it, because it's significant for them, uh whether they're retirees, whether they're people who recently uh experienced job losses, uh and they are people um that have lost significant positions. Um, they were teachers, they were administrators. I've had physicians call me and tell me about their 20% pay cuts, uh believe it or not. So people from all levels are talking about the budget and what we are doing and what we can do to keep it at a manageable, controllable level. Second has to do with gathering information. In this day and age, there is almost no way somebody cannot be accessible and visible. Whether they leave their house or not, the internet, texting, Whether they leave their house or not, the internet, texting, the phone, everybody is available at almost the drop of a hat. And I, I think it's very significant. I don't miss, I have never, I've tried not to miss, I shouldn't say never, I've tried not to miss my kids' events, athletics, swim meets, things at school, International Day, those things, you have to be accessible, you have to be visible. Because in this position, as I said earlier, we don't just have our own children's stake, we have the trust and the care of everybody's kids. So when people have suggestions, or as I heard a few complaints, we have to make sure that we're accessible and we talk to everybody to see how and where we can go about it.
Thank you. All right. Moving along, you're doing great. Question number 10. What are your thoughts, this goes to Ted first, what are your thoughts on Governor Cuomo's plan to reimagine education in New York State? And do you believe that his committee has the right voices on it?
I thought a lot about this one. As far as reimagining education, I don't think that there's any way that we can replace the importance of the student-teacher connections that occur in the classroom. A teacher recognizes a student that's struggling. It was mentioned a few minutes ago, the hugs, the support that occurs in the classroom, the student-to-student bonds that occur in a classroom. I think about Pittsburgh Pride, and, and a lot of Pittsburgh Pride awards center around a student helping another student. How does that happen in reimagined education in New York when people are distance learning? So from my perspective, I think that the idea of education becoming a, a virtual experience in its entirety i- is, is lost in my mind. Now, is there a world where maybe a class here and there, an elective here and there has a potential? I could entertain that. But as far as complete distance learning, I, I don't see that being even a relevant conversation. As far as the committee that he's put together, I've looked at that list several times and the one thing that I think is missing is the people that are down in the trenches that are actually delivering the education. There's a lot of high-level people, but I think they're missing the people that are down in the trenches and I don't think that there's enough like parental-type people involved in it. So I'm not really thinking that the committee is very well represented. So thank you.
Thank you. Robin, same question.
So our Governor Cuomo's plan to reimagine education, I share many of Ted's thoughts on it, and I really feel that our kids need to have the school-building experience. As far as the committee that our governor has put together, well, first of all, when it was first announced, there was no such committee and so there was concern and an outcry. And in my organization, the PTSA, our New York State, PTSA was very vocal and I also noticed that NICE was very vocal. I think Jolene DeBrango did a blog about reimagining education. And so with that, within days, there was a committee formed. And there is one parent from New York State PTA on that committee, Kyle Beckaloxi. And when, you know, periodically as PTSA president, we do go to Albany to advocate on behalf of the association, we did meet Kyle. So with her on the board, even though it's one parent on the board, she is, she is a great advocate for our children and we're in good hands there. Thank you.
And Suriel, I actually Xed the box too early, so you were supposed to go second, so I apologize, but you get the last word on this question.
Okay, that's okay, we're all here. I don't think that we have the answers on everything. And there may be experts out there that can give us some guidance on what may or may not work in the future. This does not work, however, unless the people that are in the relationship with our kids, their teachers, are the first and foremost that are giving their advice and expertise on how they best reach our kids. We've seen over the many years how different kids learn differently. I have three there, three of the most different learners I've ever seen. And there is no way that somebody can give one formula for teaching all of the kids in the same fashion. It just isn't possible. Whether it's the actual classroom teacher, whether it's the coach on the field, whether it's the counselor, or whomever it is, it can be one of the resource officers that is making the connection with our kids to help them in whatever fashion they need to be helped. There's no doubt about it. The idea and the, and the time of virtual learning, however you want to define that, has come and it came to us, not necessarily just since COVID, when it was thrust upon us. However, there has been virtual tutorials and going on for a long time, whether it's the Khan Academy, whether it's reaching out to our teachers in the district, to our tutoring children or giving extra help. So we have to be able to focus on the fact that the front line, as Ted said, is our teachers. They know our kids best. We may think we know our kids best as parents, but the teachers are still the professionals that are, that are giving the guidance thereafter. Somebody can give pointers, they can give guidance. We need to rely again on our mental health professionals and our social workers that can help to get, get us and our kids around obstacles to learning that may exist. And those are the ones that are going to be able to help and guide our children the best.
Thank you. Okay, you've been at this for an hour and 15 minutes and you've done a remarkable job. I am going to set you up now for your final statements. You have four minutes each. We'll start back at the top of the ballot. And Ted, if you would like to give your closing remarks.
I've enjoyed this opportunity to share my views with you this evening. These are very important times for our community. We are faced with more unknowns than knowns as it relates to the coming year and what it will look like from an educational environment. What we do know is that we have to be ready to educate our children regardless of what environmental constraints are. It is also important that while we plan for the fall, we not lose sight of the many other initiatives we have been working on, like our district-wide equity work. Our attention to finances will never be more important than now and in the coming few years. Sustainability is very important to me. I believe that I am the best candidate positioned with my qualifications and experience as a board member to help facilitate the progress as we forge ahead. I am extremely grateful to the PD, PDTA endorsement and support. I would very much appreciate your support for the board and please support the budget. It's a vote for our children and our future. Thank you and remember, vote Ted.
Thank you, Suriel. Your closing statement.
It's been an honor to be able to sit here today and listen to the voices that have been working with and for our children for so long. I've had the opportunity to meet members of the board, talk to them, get their guidance, get their suggestions, and see exactly what this position is all about. I don't think I could have been better trained for it if I had tried for the longest time. I have immersed myself in many different projects and responsibilities around Western New York, whether it was serving as a board president, a vice president, or learning about things that I was absolutely ignorant about. And when I talk about real ignorance, I talk about the needs of the children when it comes to mental health. People think that living in Pittsburgh is, is like heaven and it is a marvelous place to live, but we do have issues, we have problems. In the time that I have spent learning about our community, I learned about what the teachers are giving to their constituent students and their families, whether it's providing them Thanksgiving meals, whether it's providing them with a lunch money if the kid forgot it and is too embarrassed to ask, whether it's providing them sports equipment or even a bike. I have learned that the needs in our town are many and our resources are oftentimes silent but so supportive. And I look at people in community organizations like the Pittsburgh Youth Services, the Food Cupboard, and our similar organizations that are helping to provide supports where otherwise we wouldn't see them because we are oftentimes filled with myopia in our community. We don't know where the needs are unfortunately, and it's not until we get into these things that we find them. I will tell you that my experience as a child of immigrants who had to meld into a school, even today at age 50, my closest friends call me a chameleon because I am able to mix up and deal with people and have relationships with people from the so-called old country and then my colleagues at work and the ones that I went to college and law school with. And I'm able to see all sides of an issue such that we try to bring everybody together onto a common platform. We want to make sure, our job is to ensure that every single student is made to feel at home and respected in our schools and outside. We want to see equitable treatment, equitable teaching, and equitable distribution of the resources that we have, limited as they may be, coming from the governor. It is my hope that the things that I have been able to communicate with the constituents through this forum, through the other forums that I've had, and through my own friends who have reached out to others to educate them on where I stand, is enough to convince the voters that I am the right person for this job. Vote for Suriel and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Robin, your closing remarks.
Thank you for being here to participate in tonight's Meet the Candidates event. Thank you to our Central PTSA President-elect Sarah Palucio, Vice President of Education Darla Darby, and Central PTSA Secretary Jones Sparandio. I'd like to also thank you, say thank you to the PDTA for endorsing me and to my many friends and supporters. Many thanks to Sherri Johnson, our Monroe County School Board Association's Executive Director, for moderating this evening's discussion. I'm asking for your support. I'm committed to continue the work for our school district that is vision-centered, student-centered, comprises equity and inclusion, social-emotional learning focus, as I referred to earlier, boutique, public education learning experience with a private school feel, intent on producing global citizens equipped to accept and welcome all. The role I currently serve, Pittsburgh PTSA President, has been a proving ground and learning experience for school board service. Did you know that almost half of our school board members have served as Central PTSA President? Join me in being Pittsburgh-focused for the success of all students. Send in your ballot by June 9. There's time and remember that if you run out of time, please go to Pittsburgh Central Office, 75 Barker Road on June 9, and there will be someone standing there to receive your ballot from 8 to 5. Experience, commitment, impact, that's me, Robin Scott, third slot on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank all three of you for your willingness to work on behalf of the children in our district. And I have all best wishes for all three of you. The Pittsburgh PTSA has asked me to read on their behalf the directions on how to vote on the school budget and the school board election. These are different this year due to the governor's executive order suspending in-person voting and instituting instead an absentee ballot-only vote. I see that Darla's on the screen. Do you want me to go ahead and read those as I have them?
That would be great. Thank you.
Perfect. You need to make sure, first and foremost, that there are instructions for filling out an absentee ballot. And if you've never done so, and I have now for the first time, you really need to follow those directions explicitly. Once you've got the ballot filled out, you gotta, you have to fold it and place it in the official ballot envelope that will, you will have received. The important thing to remember is there can be only one absentee ballot placed in the official ballot envelope. Otherwise, it will void your vote. Fill out the front of the official ballot envelope, you will turn it over and you will sign the back of that envelope. If the ballot envelope is not signed, the absentee ballot will be void. So make sure, again, follow those explicitly. Place the signed and sealed ballot envelope in the postage-paid District Clerk Return envelope and make sure that it is sealed. Ballots must be received in the office of the District Clerk no later than 5:00 PM on June 9, 2020. They may be mailed or dropped off in person on June 9 only in the following locations. As Robin said, it's Barker Road, Middle School, 75 Barker Road, Pittsburgh, New York. If you need an additional ballot for qualified voters, they can be requested by contacting the District Clerk, and that is Deborah Carpenter, and it's deborah underscore carpenter at pittsburgh-monroe.edu. And that is my portion of the candidate night. I will turn this back over to Darla for the PTSA final remarks.
On behalf of the PTSA, I would like to thank all the board candidates for participating this evening. I'd like to extend a special thank you to our moderator, Sherri Johnson. In addition, I would like to thank Matthew Kwitkowski for making this forum possible, Anthony Juris for providing video, and Jones Sparandio for her tireless work in coordinating this evening. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you.